Okay. I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a form of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I need a motion to certify our agenda.
Motion.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four. Josh for it. That's five oh. Let the record show that Brooke Lucille and Leanne Ramsey are not present tonight. I'll lead us in prayer. Pray with me. God, thank you for the break that we had and thank you for the season that we celebrated. Thank you, Jesus, for dying on the cross for our sins if we may be forgiven. And we pray, God, that you watch over Mount Vernon ISD, that you watch over our students and our staff and all these that are up here loving these kids. And we have, God, just help us to do whatever we need to do and make decisions that we need to make that will best affect our kids. And we pray to God that you be with us this winter. Pray, God, especially for those kids that are in cold homes and homes that don't have food and different things. God, just be with those kids and help us to love them more when they get up here. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's do our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being precious to God. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dr. McCullough? Spoke out of January. I'll take this off so I'm called. January is set aside for School Board Appreciation Month. And each of you at your seat had gifts that were presented there for you by each one of our campuses, as well as you had a... I'll go from navigating to success. School Board Recognition Month, as my chair slowly goes down. And down, and down. We'll get there in a minute. Says honoring and has your name for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service for the children of this community. And I personally want to say on behalf of Mount Vernon ISD as superintendent of our schools, we do have a great board. They work very hard, work very well together, supportive of what we're doing as a district. And we are truly blessed to have them. There are districts around the state who do not have a team of seven board members who work as well together or get along as well as what these seven do. And we are very fortunate to be able to have them. And so I want to say thank you personally to each one of y'all for what you do, for your service to our district, and for that high-paid job that you have, and which is all volunteered. So we are grateful for you. And I do want to read and share a proclamation by the governor. I'm going to stand to read this. But it says, "As we continue to face the unprecedented challenges presented by the novel coronavirus pandemic, the importance of ensuring a better tomorrow by securing our young people's bright and precious futures has never been greater. This year has brought the indispensable value of education into sharp focus as school districts across Texas continue to dedicate time and resources to ensure Texas students receive the best education possible regardless of the circumstances. Though we have encountered many new trials, the fact remains that a rigorous and well-rounded education serves as the best foundation upon which young Texans can build successful lives out of their dreams. School boards play a vital role in our efforts to improve education in the long run of our state. Across Texas, dedicated school boards work with parents, educators, and community members to create successful learning environments. Our school boards have also been instrumental in our state's educational response to COVID-19 by leading their districts and implementing safety measures, coordinating and facilitating online learning, providing support to administrative staff, teachers, parents, and students. While school districts will always face new challenges as they serve the needs of students, Texas can count on their school board members along with other dedicated school officials to weather these trials, create opportunities to discuss important issues, develop innovative solutions, and empower educators while remaining focused on the students' futures. At this time, I encourage all Texas to join in recognizing and celebrating the work and success of our many school board members across Texas and to remember that the children we nurture today will become the leaders of our state and nation tomorrow. Therefore, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, does hereby proclaim January 2021 to be School Board Recognition Month." So if you would please, if you would just say, "You help me give a round of applause to our board in a way of saying thanks to them for their service." Again, thank you, twenty of you, for what you do.
And you know, sometime, I'm sure all of y'all will be talking to somebody on the phone or you'll see somebody and they'll say, "Oh, you know, I feel sorry for you for doing that." And I'm saying this because we're on camera, so other people can hear. But we don't have to do this. We don't get paid. We don't have to do this. We don't want to do it. We don't feel called to serve these students and our staff. And we don't have to do this. So that's why we're up here. And we go, we leave out of here and we go into closed session and we meet after almost every board meeting and then we'll come back in here and end it. And I can't say what goes on in there. But it doesn't get, it just always goes good. We work together. You know, if we have a little bit of something in there, it gets resolved very quickly. So, and I'm proud to be a part of a team like that. There's a saying in the Bible or a quote that says, "Iron sharpens iron," and that's what we have to do, is have to help each other out. So I appreciate y'all, too. And our best part of the meeting is, right now, not knocking you guys on this exciting audit report that's going to happen in a little bit. And just to let you know, we're going to do this. And a lot of times, our teachers got to go home and grade papers. We expect that out of them, lesson plans, different things like that. So they might not hang around, but we'll have it on film and be excited to watch it for the later date. So we're going to do our employees' month right now.
Okay, yes, sir, we sure are. All right. So first, we are going to start this month with our Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month, and that is Ms. Charlotte Homer. If she will come forward, please. Read a little something said about her. Said, "Ms. Homer has played a key role in creating a positive campus culture here at Mount Vernon Middle School. Each day, she greets students, staff members, and visitors with a warm and welcoming smile. She consistently makes a priority to love on each student that comes in. Ms. Homer focuses 100% of her attention to each and every student that needs her so desperately. It is not uncommon for her to walk, or for you to walk through the front office and hear her singing old church hymns. And she has an amazing voice. Her Christ-like attitude is so refreshing and uplifting to so many. We are truly blessed to have Ms. Homer here at Mount Vernon Middle School." So our middle school, our auxiliary staff member of the month, Ms. Charlotte Homer.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Was there anything?
Hey, I just love serving the kids. I know Dr. Payne, I asked him today. I said, "Do I have to say anything?" He said, "Yeah, you have to say something and sing." I said, "Okay." No, I'm just kidding. You can't ask a former pastor's wife if she wants to say anything because it just bubbles up. And when I think about these kids, one thing that comes to mind is some having compassion making a difference. And you know, when you're dealing with kids, sometimes it's hard to have compassion. And then sometimes, when you do have that compassion, it's what's making the difference. And that's investing in them. Because that's investing in the future. And I think it's a privilege to serve them. Everybody, I've heard people say, "Middle school, how do you deal with middle school?" I said, "It's my favorite because I feel like I get to invest in them 100%. And I hope one day, they can look back and say, 'Man, that is one lady who made a difference in my life.'" Thank you.
Well, there you go.
Very good, thank you. Wow, thank you, Ms. Homer. Thank you for what you do. Okay, next, we will move to the Elementary Teacher of the Month, and that is Ms. Elizabeth Thiel. I'm saying Elizabeth on episode. All right, so Ms. Thiel is passionate about improving the math instruction at Mount Vernon Elementary School. She shares her expertise with all teachers as well as serving as an official mentor to new teachers on campus. Ms. Thiel goes above and beyond to help other teachers improve and shares her resources with them. Ms. Thiel leads teachers in examining student data and using the data to drive their instruction. Students flourish during intervention with Ms. Thiel. She builds positive relationships with her students and their families. We are blessed to have her as a part of the Mount Vernon Elementary School family. So Ms. Beth Thiel, Elementary Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. Very good.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
No, she said it.
Okay. All right. Our Middle School Teacher of the Month for January is Ms. Erica Marker. Congratulations. Says, "Here at Mount Vernon Middle School, Coach Marker is the ultimate problem solver on the middle school campus, and her expertise is genuinely valued and loved by all. Although she teaches multiple preps in addition to coaching multiple sports, she maintains high-quality instruction each and every day and she refuses to lower the bar for any of her students. It is not uncommon for Coach Marker to leave snacks or peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for students that might be hungry after school or to literally give them the shirt off her back if they are in need. Coach Marker is a teacher that not only pushes and lifts her students to be their very best, she also challenges and pushes other teachers. She has absolutely stepped up and continues to play a critical role during the pandemic and has helped in training all teachers to utilize new technology. We are blessed to have her as part of the Mount Vernon Middle School family. Thank you for your sacrifice each and every day to love and grow our students." Very good. All right. There we go, okay. Congratulations. You want to say anything?
If you don't like the cake, Ashley Bates made it.
Oh.
Okay, they like it.
All right. Our High School Teacher of the Month is Mr. R.J. Soler Rosano. Did I say that right? Okay. Congratulations. Very good, all right. So what it said is, "Mr. Soler Rosano has established himself over the last few years as one of the most reliable staff members at Mount Vernon High School. Inside the classroom, he works diligently with his math students to make sure they are prepared academically. Mr. Soler is always prepared and takes seriously his responsibility to deliver quality-aligned instruction to his students. Mr. Soler displays great patience and professionalism on a daily basis as he works closely with Mount Vernon High School's special populations. He is highly respected by his students and they appreciate his calm, patient, and understanding demeanor. Mr. Soler teaches three classes, handles math inclusion support, works in content mastery, and covers art and associated documentation. In addition to all his regular duties, he is always willing to take on extra tasks without hesitation. He is always seeking new ideas and willing to listen, learn, and collaborate with his colleagues. Mr. Soler is a consummate professional and all his interactions with colleagues and staff can always be counted on to fulfill his professional obligations in a timely and efficient manner. In short, he has established himself as a highly respected teacher on our campus and is well-deserved to be named Teacher of the Month for Mount Vernon High School." Mr. Soler, High School Teacher of the Month for January. Congratulations. Congratulations. You want to say anything?
Um, no. She said, "Oh."
Yeah, okay. Ready, oh, yeah, I'll come up and take one more picture.
Is that going to affect anything? Be okay.
She's telling her. Yeah. We shouldn't be next to her.
Everybody was just white. One, two, three. One more.
One, two, three.
Congratulations, y'all. Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you. Do you have something?
Well, the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth Student Council wanted to give y'all appreciation. So it was Ms. Marker and Mr. Bates and myself. Wait, I believe the fourth is like the cake. So the kid's son was reading it on TikTok. And so what you do is you take, there's the cake. And what you do is you put your cup into the cake and you pull up. We forgot the fourth, but they're like, "Let's do it on TikTok." Okay. So that's what you do with these cups. Like to indicate you just use your piece of cake into the cup. Yes, so good old TikTok.
Thank you, thank you. Very thoughtful.
Thank you, all of you.
It's a chocolate cake with chocolate milk with a chocolate ganache and then a caramel cake. It's all, oh, no.
Chocolate covered.
Okay.
It's like a flat white chocolate cake.
Y'all are going to have about 30 seconds to do this audit report. Now, let's see. We don't have, Scott, will you make for sure? I don't see anybody in here for open forum. We'll check our list back here.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you. Okay, so we have no open forum comments. So we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Consider Approval of Our Consent Agenda. Any questions on our consent agenda? Okay, so I'm taking a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Robert. Seconded by Linda, all four. That's five oh.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our action items. And Item A is Consider Approval of the Independent Audit Report as presented by Rutherford and Taylor and Company. So are you doing the report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is your name?
Wilson.
Wilson.
Yes, sir.
All right, Wilson. So y'all have the floor.
Awesome. Stand or?
Yes, sir.
Say what you're hearing.
Yeah, we've got a microphone there. It'll pick you up.
Awesome.
As we're on film, so this will be two ways, live and, not live.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions or if I go through something too quick. So I'll start on page five of the audit report, the Independent Auditor's Report. The main takeaway from this part of the report is the opinion issued. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Mount Vernon Independent School District as of August 31, 2020." It's telling you that we have issued an unmodified opinion of your financial for the year. On page seven, you can see the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control. The main takeaway from this part of the report is mentioned in the internal control over financial reporting. The, just about the last sentence in that paragraph is talking about, "We look at your internal controls in the district, but we do not issue an opinion on those internal controls. We're just looking to make sure that it will not affect any of your financial statements." Next, going over to page nine. This is, this letter is saying that we performed a single audit looking at your Title I Fund and went through the internal controls, looking at those, to making sure that they're within federal compliance. On page 11, there's the Schedule of Findings and Questioning Costs. That top line, Type of Report on Financial Statements, Unmodified Opinion. And then it goes through Internal Control Over Financial Reporting, stating if there is a material weakness identified. There was not significant deficiencies identified that are not considered to be material weaknesses and unreported. So on, and identification of major programs is the Title I Part A Cluster. And moving on through the next couple of pages would be where any financial statement findings would be listed, federal award findings, prior year findings, corrective action plans. There were none. And so on page 16, we'll begin the Management's Discussion and Analysis. At the financial highlights, the district's total combined net position was $8.4 million as of August 31, 2020. During the year, the district's expenses were $1.1 million less than the $21.4 million generated in taxes and other revenues for governmental activities. The district experienced disruption in traditional educational service due to the state and national responses to the COVID-19 pandemic during the year. The general fund reported a fund balance this year of $5.3 million, and the district issued no new debt. Going forward to page 18, you can look at a year-to-year comparison of Mount Vernon Independent School District's net position to note the cash and investments total raised by 28% from $5.6 million to $7.2 million ending in cash, and an overall increase of 15% in total net position from $7.3 million in the prior year to $8.4 million in the current year. And then on Table A2 on page 19, there is a total increase of 9.8% to total revenues from $19.5 million to $21.4 million, and a total increase of 4% to total expenses from $19.5 million to $20.3 million. This resulted in a total increase in that position of $1.1 million. Then moving through, you can see on page 20 there are pie charts labeling where money was brought in for certain revenues and where money was spent in different functional fields. Majority of the expenses were spent on instructional, instruction and instructional delivered services at 56%. And then moving forward, we get to the basic financial statements on page 24. The first couple here, the statement of net position and statement of activities are just expanded versions of what we looked at in the Manager's Discussion and Analysis. And on page 27, the Exhibit C1 balance sheets of governmental funds. Your total general fund ending balance is $5.3 million, which is a healthy fund balance for your school district. And going through is more detailed information on the governmental funds, to the government-wide reconciliations, what changes were made to come to those numbers. And moving through to page 35, we get to Notes to the Basic Financial Statements, which goes into detail describing what each line item in the financial statements means and how those numbers were derived. And I would say the most important note to make after that is on page 57, Exhibit G1. Y'all, at year-end, y'all were not over budget in any category. And that is about it to that. Are there any questions that y'all have or anything that you would like mentioned?
Questions? Is that kind of what you're seeing with other districts that have, you know, quit school early like we did? Or they, did they?
As far as COVID-19?
Yeah, as far as COVID-19.
Yes, sir.
And saving them the money of expenses at the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Without buses and such, playing sports. Is that kind of what you're seeing?
It's pretty standard across all the school districts that we've looked at. The main reason that we've come across for an increase in revenues and expenses was the addition of House Bill Three for teacher salaries and also the additional state aid due to that. And I guess one other note, as far as state aid goes, because of the federal money that was given to the state and it was reduced from state aid through the ESSER grant. So revenue was unaffected total by that, but it just went from state to federal.
Pam, we've been here tonight, but Gary is being sworn in tomorrow. And she is not missing one of those since he has been a part of that. So I asked her, I told her to give her permission to leave today to go ahead. And I knew if anybody had a question, we would call her. But I knew y'all would be okay with that and would support her being there with Gary tomorrow. So she had, she could definitely go. She's got Austin.
So Pam did a great job this year really handling a tough year, I think, in regard to what we were faced with, especially starting in March. And really kept a great eye on what we're doing and what we've had to do and continue to do so. So we agree with that and really appreciate everything that she does.
Awesome. Yeah, it was great to work with her. Any questions we had, she answered them fully. There was nothing outstanding that we had any questions on by the end. Excuse me. And I believe I gave you the papers to sign. Awesome. I'll be on the touch, but then you get that's it. Y'all are okay? Good to go?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I know y'all will be able to get out of here pretty quick. We don't lack a lot more time in here. We'll sign.
We'll get them because Brooke's on here. She has sent.
And if you have any questions, feel free to call us or email us at any time. We'd be happy to answer them.
I know y'all have another one to get to.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. Did a good job. Appreciate it.
Guys, thank you. Thank you again for what y'all did. Thank you very much.
Do you all need to, sorry, I'm a little unimpressed. Still need to vote to approve before I move forward?
Well, wait until they vote. We're about to.
Yeah, that's coming up right now. So at this time, I'm making a motion that we approve the Independent Audit Report as presented. Do I have a second? A second by Scott, all four. That's five oh. All right, we got you all.
Thank you.
Guys, thank y'all very much. Y'all be safe.
We're going to Item B. Can y'all read this twice? Would you want to look at this?
Just send me a copy.
I got this copy right now.
You got a copy? Yeah, she's got it.
Question later.
Item B, Adopt Order of General Election to be Held May 1, 2021. Let me see if I need to read anything. Probably do.
Yeah, the order's there. You see it?
That's right here?
Yes.
An election is hereby ordered to be held on May 1, 2021 for the purpose of to elect two school trustees for a three-year term and bill special vacancy for an unexpired term. Early voting by personal appearance will be conducted each weekday at Mount Vernon City Hall, 109 North Kaufman Street, Mount Vernon, Texas, 75457, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. beginning on April 19, 2021 and ending on April 27, 2021. Applicants for ballot by mail shall be mailed, emailed, or faxed to Mount Vernon ISD or by email at elections@mountvernandisd.net or fax 903-537-4784, 501 Texas Highway 37, Mount Vernon, Texas, 75457. Applications for ballots by mail must be received no later than the close of business on April 20, 2021. Issue this 11th day of January 2021. And I'll sign this. Don't see anywhere on here on voter ID, but I'd say that's probably required.
Probably isn't the main reason.
Yeah. I'll have to be careful what I can say.
Do we might want to move to a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve or not the order of election as presented.
Motion made by Josh. Do I have a second? Seconded by Linda, all four. That's five oh.
Very good, thank you.
Item C, Consider Approval of 2020/21 Academic Calendar Revision.
Okay, in your package, Kendra made some revisions to our calendar to reflect a couple of things from the fall. What I want you to be sure you see in this was, as you know, we took off the 17th and 18th of September there at the end of the first six weeks for COVID. And then we took half-days on November 20th, December 4th, and December 18th to let out early for football playoff games. And we took off all-day December the 11th. playoff games, and we took off all-day December 11. So, those changes are reflected there, and I want to make a recommendation that we add one additional day off on our calendar. You know, we had, some of us had, we kind of had some conversations before Christmas about, about maybe even extended Christmas a little bit. We talked through that. I asked that we would wait and maybe try to see what we could do during the spring semester. I want to make a recommendation that we extend the President's Weekend, President's Day Weekend that we're off on the 15th. I'd like to make a recommendation that we take off that Friday beforehand, just make a little longer weekend. That time through January and February leading up to spring break is a pretty long time, a lot colder, just, you know, it's kind of a long stretch. Give an additional day there, I think, would be a great thing for our students and our staff as well. And so, that is, that's the recommendation on the revisions of the change. We still have, even with those, as you know, we, since we started early, we had, we had additional minutes built into our calendar just for COVID. Thankfully, we did because we had used a couple of days, as well as it came in handy something for our football games. So, even with that, I believe we still have seven days available as well, in addition to our two bad weather days that we have. So, we still have some flexibility in the calendar if something comes up in regard to COVID and we need to take some time again as well.
Y'all good? So, we're looking at the extra day we're talking about is February the 15th?
February the 12th.
We're already on the 12th.
We're already on the 15th, yeah.
Okay. So, that sounds good. All right. So, I need a motion that we approve the 2020, 2021 Academic Calendar Revision as presented. That motion is made by Robert, and seconded by Linda, and it's a five oh vote.
Thank you.
Item D, Consider Approval of Resolution of the Board Regarding Precautionary Leave in Response to Discontinuation of FF-CRA. Now, if you're going to...
I will. I'll talk about that, and if you have more questions that I can't clear up, Kendra's here to help us with that as well. But, but that leave, that FF-CRA leave was a federal mandate back, at least last fall, the fall semester for employers, that if a employee had to be off for close contact quarantine or from COVID-related sickness, that they had up to 10 days that they could take off leave without having to use their own personal leave. We had, I don't even know if they count, I forgot to count, but we had...
767 days.
767, how many employees? Do I have employees on this?
I don't have an employee count. I just have days in the total dollar.
So, we used, yeah, 767 days based, combined of quarantine and leave back in the fall. We did have some who had to be quarantined a couple of times. We had some who were quarantined and then got sick, but that leave expired on December 31st. So, what my recommendation is, is because we had several, we had employees who had to use that leave during the fall, and grateful that we had some who didn't, but I'd like to have that there standing. It would be a local decision, but my recommendation would be that we would extend that for employees who did not have to utilize that leave during the fall. So, give some examples there in your board book. So, if I would have gotten sick and had to be out, or had to be quarantined during the fall semester and had to use eight days of the COVID leave, I would not be eligible for to use it again during the spring. Since I wasn't, if I happened to get sick, let's say, all right, I have to be quarantined, and it lines up with the President's Day, that extended holiday, or the extended weekend during February, and I only need four days, then I'm going to use four days, and I only use it that one time. So, we can use it up to 10, 10 days, but you get a one-time use of it. And so, really, what I'm asking is just trying to extend that, that leave as a benefit for those who did not have to utilize it during the, during the fall, just as a, I guess as a way of trying to be somewhat fair and equal to them as well. Explain that, kind of how we come through that? Any questions on that?
So, this, this is, those days are over. That's...
Correct. That, that federal mandate has expired. We kind of really thought, I think everybody thought that they would extend it first of the year, but I think just because of the political happenings that are taking place right now, I think that's just kind of gone by the wayside as of now. It could be extended later on. If it does, then that will, if the federal government extends it to what it was during the fall, then it will be extended to all employees. But as of right now, my recommendation is to at least, or not to at least, but to extend it for those who did not have to utilize it during the fall, to give them that same opportunity.
So, yeah, we don't have to do that.
Correct.
We don't have to do that to those, but we're...
Correct, we don't. Just a way of taking, trying to, again, take care of our employees.
Yeah. Okay.
So, for those, in fact, say this, for those who did, who did have to utilize it during the fall, if they get quarantined or get sick again during the spring, they will have to use their state or local leave that they have in the amount of time that they have. This is only to last to the end of this current school year, to the end of the 2021 school year. And we're hoping everything is, I hope, be taken care of, but, I mean, we'll reevaluate if the need is there come the next school year. And the resolution is there in your, in your board book? The resolution is very similar, and it will, if you remember, we passed a COVID revolution at the November, revolution, a COVID resolution, COVID League Resolution at the November Board Meeting. So, this will nullify that resolution because there is a change to it. And really, what the main change is in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraph, I believe, is this, "Due to the discontinuation of Families First Coronavirus Response Act leave, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Mount Vernon Independent School District authorizes providing precautionary paid leave for regular employees, contractual and non-contractual, salaried and nonsalaried, who are instructed not to report to work during an epidemic if the employee has not used FF-CRA-related leave during the fall semester 2020. Precautionary leave will be limited to one COVID-related absence of up to 10 consecutive business days. Employees who have used any FF-CRA-related leave during the fall semester 2020 will not be eligible for precautionary leave and will be required to use all of their armory leave available." So, that's the main change in the resolution.
So, what are we looking at? Is our ending date of this?
It will end, it says, I think it says...
End of the semester. For this, 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 June 30th, 2021.
Yeah. 30th of June 2021.
Okay.
So, it'll be the end of our fiscal year. Yeah, end of our fiscal year.
So, we're, because I'm on a motion, you know, that's what I was going to put, was that date in there, so we're sure on that date, that June 30th is the date.
It's not fiscal year, it's actually contractual year.
So, is that June 30th, that date?
June 30th.
Correct, yes.
It's in there? Okay. So, we need a motion that we adopt the Resolution of the Board Regarding Precautionary Leave in Response to Discontinuation of FF-CRA as presented. Do I have a motion for that? I'll make that motion. It's seconded by Robert. Any further discussion? Okay, all four. That's five oh.
Thank you all. Thanks for helping take care of our employees.
And we'll move on to our information items here, getting toward the end, rolling totals.
As you see, right now, we are, we have come back from the semester break, really about where we left. We're 1476, and our, that was as of the 7th. I think we're still right there, around there. We, we kind of had some coming and goings, and I think we're, like I said, right about even where we were when we left for Christmas.
Okay. So, at this time, the board will convene in the closed meeting to discuss personnel matters and evaluate the superintendent, discuss superintendent's contract and flossing on the agenda, and allow by Texas Governor Code 551074. It's 6:39. Open session at 8:30 p.m., and like the record show, 7:18, 7:18, Leanne joined us in the executive session. Okay. So, what do you mean, acknowledge the resignation of Megan Law?
Well, first do, you have superintendent's contract.
Okay. So, let me get down here then.
Thank you. Sorry. All right, just, it says, Consider Superintendent's Contract, Professional Contract, Acknowledged Resignations.
Yep, so, under Consider Superintendent Contract, where is what you gotta say that you need to read off? Did we hand that to me?
Yeah.
Make some paper on the spot. Okay.
So, makes you just extending the term, extending the term on the contract again to June 30th, 2023.
Okay. We did that in the motion, right? All right, so at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we extend Dr. McCullough's contract for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2023. Do I have a second for that? Seconded by Scott. All four. That's five oh on that one.
Thank you very much. There are no professional contracts that I'm going to recommend at this time.
Okay. Any resignations to acknowledge?
One, Megan Law is Child Nutrition Director. It won't be effective for another couple of weeks, but she has, has turned in her resignation.
Good. Any further business? If there's no further business, then I'll declare the meeting adjourned at... At 32 p.m.
Thank you all very much. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for another good year.